Caught order, can I get roll call please?
Mayor Gerardo Sanchez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Africa Luna Carrasco.
Present.
Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Present.
Councilmember Jose Ponce.
Present.
Councilmember Matias Rosales.
Present.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? Councilmember Ponce, could you lead us with the pledge of allegiance please?
Thank you Mayor, let's pray. Father, we thank you tonight for your goodness and your grace to each one of us and we thank you that as we begin to go into this next new physical year, we pray that you would give us the wisdom and discernment to govern the way that you've called us to. We pray that we would put differences aside for the sake of unity within our community and we pray God that you would allow us the opportunity to do that as they trust us to make those decisions. We pray also and thank you for what is happening with the pandemic at this time, we thank you for the numbers being quite low, we thank you that there is beginning to be some type of resemblance of healing within our land and our community as those that have lost loved ones, we agree with, and those that have come through it, we thank you for that. So Father, we pray that you would have your hand on this meeting tonight, we ask it in your name, amen.
We are going to go ahead with our first presentation, item number 4A, presentation in all matters regarding Greater Yuma Port Authority activities. Bina George, bienvenida.
Hello, good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Bina George and I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director to the Greater Yuma Port Authority and I'm here with a quick summary of events that we've got going on. Do I have a clicker Sonia, here? No, thank you. Wonderful. So, the Greater Yuma Port Authority's mission statement is to develop a gateway for global trade, to facilitate, promote, and support multimodal transportation and trade opportunities to enhance economic development in the Greater Yuma area. Currently, the Executive Board members, I'm sorry, we've got four entities with two appointed members each, with the City of San Luis being represented by Chairman and Council or Councilmember, I'm sorry. I'm sorry boss, geez. Matias Rosales and then Frank Carrasco from Brink's Trucking. From Yuma County, we have Chairman of the Board of Supervisors Tony Reyes and County Administrator Susan Thorpe. From the Cocopahandian Tribe, Gary Magrino for Business Development and their new planner Fernando Mesquita. And for the city of Yuma, we have Councilmember Gary Knight and newly appointed Wayne Gale who is President of First Think Yuma. So, I provided a timeline just for the sake of information, so anything having to do with large projects obviously take time. The GYPA, I was told, was envisioned in 1995, came to fruition in 2000 and finally could say that they put the San Luis Two Commercial Port of Entry in 2010. So, when it comes to binational coordination, also state, local, and federal levels, it takes a little bit of time and it takes participation from all the entities with a lot of moving parts. So, the travel restrictions, when I emailed this over to Sonia, it was still June 27th, 21st, excuse me, they did do a 30-day extension onto that, so into July we are now for another 30 days as far as the essential travel is concerned. Also provided for you was the pedestrian data for 2019, 2020, and the first quarter of 2021. So, obviously, we're going to see the de-escalation towards mid-March and April when the travel restrictions were implemented. So, we're seeing a little less than 100,000 people in April and slowly climbing into December for 2020 and then those numbers coming up just a tad bit in March for the first quarter. Private vehicles, we see along the same trends as we saw with the pedestrians and the commercial trucks, we've seen a record of over 6,000 in the first quarter for 2020, which is really exciting news. So, some of the collaborative events that we have done with GYEDC, Forefront ED, as well as Oprode San Luis Rio Colorado, which is essentially the Economic Development Corporation, but in San Luis. In 2019, we hosted the Binational Customs Forum there in San Luis, Mexico. In 2020, we did the Binational Trade Series because obviously we all had to make adjustments due to COVID. And then 2021, we still kept it virtual with the second one as far as highlighting the logistics portions along with the trade methods and then later this year, excuse me, we are doing one focused on regional planning. An update on the Magrino Industrial Park, we did in conjunction with Jenny, bless her heart, she's been so wonderful and helpful towards this whole project. We applied for a 500,000 Arizona Commerce Authority for great paving and grading that was awarded and in fact, final walkthrough for that phase is going to be tomorrow, so that's coming to an end. GYEDC assisted in the grant writing and we are in our fourth development for the phasing of the industrial park. Right where you see the blue arrows is where the third phase, initial phase, excuse me, for the Arizona Commerce Authority Grant was issued. So, some of the successes I'd like to share was the expansion of spindle cooling from groundbreaking to development to ribbon cutting to a full functioning facility. They've got over 50,000 square feet of temperature-controlled warehousing. They have an estimated 10.7 million investment after the initial, or excuse me, the completed of the three projects and those were pre-COVID prices, so I'm going to assume that that'll probably be a little bit higher in the next few years. As of right now, looking at 22 employees with an average salary of $16 an hour. Next success is Labri Manufacturing, also from groundbreaking to current development. They're looking at a $4 million investment with 35 employees and again, this facility will immediately support manufacturing plant in San Luis, Mexico with over 200 employees. Overall, positive economic impact for the county. As we continue our mission, opening the dialogue with port users, with the federal agencies, making the needs known and working in conjunction to find a resolution and that's with CBP, ADOT, and USDA. So, some of the action items we have going, the full-time entomologist letter we submitted earlier this month. There were some users, excuse me, that had expressed wants of extended port hours at San Luis, reducing the overall out-of-service for the truck rates and that's working in conjunction with ADOT, improving the wait times for the pedestrians and the vehicles. Broadband is a big factor, excuse me, as far as supporting our federal partners and ensuring that Yuma County and San Luis are all represented when it comes to In eastern or Arizona or US Mexico decisions. So, with that Mayor, going back to the mission statement, developing a gateway for global trade is a successful implementation of San Luis Two. Supporting multimodal transportation is ensuring that all our major arterial roadways to 95 to the 8 are taken care of and well-maintained and the economic development aspect is the development of the Magrino Industrial Park. So, with GYPA celebrating their 20th years, we want to thank the City of San Luis for their partnership and I would like to thank you Mayor for your wonderful staff. If there was anything I ever needed, I just picked up the phone, whether it was administration or planning or economic development and everybody has really helped through this whole process, so I want to say thank you personally for that. And with that.
I just want to say that GYPA has been present in all the major meetings we've had with ADOT, with the Governor, with our counterparts in Mexico, Dagobin Arlo Pavlovich and you can see, 10 years ago, we were always thinking, why were, I was questioning, why were we part of this organization? Why we haven't seen any benefits? And what I see now is multi-million investments and I hear that all the plots that were already processed or developed have already been sold and people are looking for more lots and these are future investments. These are future jobs for the City of San Luis and the community and a lot of them have a business across the border, but they need a hub, a US hub. And I believe the City of San Luis, thanks to the vision of the Greater Yuma Port Authority, there's land available and San Luis has the development, has the land available. And I appreciate for everything you do and what the organization does and what it stands for and it's clearly making an impact. And once the whole COVID situation normalizes and we're back to business, it's already coming, you're going to see the investors, you're going to see people coming and that's the best part of seeing something from vacant land to developed land and now sold land. And so, I commend you, I commend you, I commend your staff and also the members. They're the visionaries and that's what we need and I thank you, thank you for the update.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Be careful what you say because it's the staff of one. He's gonna, he's gonna want some more staff, huh Bina?
It's up to your Chairman, okay? It's up to him. Oh, you're the Chairman.
More money?
Yeah, there we go. Now, we're going to go ahead and go with item number 4B, presentation in all matters regarding COVID-19 sewage testing early warning program. Paul Early, thank you Paul for coming, appreciate it.
You bet, thanks for the opportunity.
Of course.
Mayor, council members. I'm Paul Brighterley, I run what's called the Yuma Center of Excellence for Desert Agriculture. It's a University of Arizona public-private partnership with the agriculture industry here in Yuma. And let's see. So, we were asked, when the outbreak was rolling last summer, we were asked by one of our donors if there's something we could do to help Yuma County get back to work safely, in particular with the vegetable season coming on and people coming. So, and I'm going to go through this quicks because there's not much time, so if you have questions at the end, feel free. But in a nutshell, we brainstormed a lot of things, we decided on this tool that had been, that they were utilizing in Tucson at the U of A to analyze wastewater and look for the virus that causes COVID and actually they can detect it in the wastewater a week before someone who was infected would have symptoms. So, it's an early warning system to know that people are being infected. And so, we decided that we would try to bring that here to Yuma County to help protect the ag workforce, but then by having a lab here, which we built up, then it could be really a community asset and used for the community as a whole. So, this is how it works, you collect samples from the wastewater plants or other, depending on the community that you're testing. You collect the samples, you concentrate it, you filter it, and then you analyze it with PCR machines so that you can quantify how much is in the wastewater. So, again, you can define the community any way you want, just depending how you're collecting the sample. So, it could be a whole city if you're doing a wastewater plant, it could be a school, it could be a dormitory, it could be a factory or a packing house, these kinds of things. In fact, we had hoped even to be able to test outhouses and so that we could pinpoint in a particular farm labor crew when someone was infected, before they infected everybody else like was happening in the meatpacking plants. Turns out, we couldn't do that because of the chemicals in the outhouses, but we found a lot of other good uses for it. So, just a timeline of what we did here in Yuma County, like I mentioned, it was Jesus Tovar from TNP Farms in Somerton who came to us with the initial request that got us going on this. We got funding from the Yuma County Board of Supervisors to establish the lab, equip the lab, and hire the personnel to run the lab. And so, we did that, that was challenging, but we got a lab going and set up in the middle of COVID. We hired people to run it. The first things we did, we had a really successful adventure, if you will, with Date Pack. The Date Pack has a facility that they run year-round with 200-person crews and we started testing just before Thanksgiving and we were not finding any of the virus and after the Thanksgiving break, when everybody goes home and has their get-togethers, we had a positive test and that was really our first one and it's like, oh, what do we do? We had been working with county health department and hospital and others and so Diana Gomez, the county health director, was quick to respond and got in touch with Amanda Geary at the Regional Center for Border Health and they put a mobile testing unit in the parking lot that afternoon, tested all of the employees and found four who were asymptomatic but infected and one of them had a spouse working there too, so they asked all five to isolate. And the next week when we tested, we found no virus. So, we, you know, are fairly confident that we prevented an outbreak there. It would have been right at the holiday time, would have stopped production at Date Pack. And they've continued to do that testing at their own expense because it's so valuable to them to know they're keeping their workforce safe. We did the same thing at the dorms at Arizona Western College, so we're able to alert them when there's an issue and then they get people tested and figure out who it is and isolate them. Then we did, Yuma County again funded schools pilot projects so that we could test schools and see what that would tell us. And then we got funding from the state to do countywide, all the municipalities and really kind of do zone testing roughly in every zip code, but just to make sure that every sort of population center was being tested and of course, that includes San Luis. Mayor, we appreciate your support of your city joining in on that. So, yes, I want to tell you about that. What they funded was for us to do testing twice a week of, I think it was 15 sites, but three of them were in San Luis. We worked with Tadeo and Ibohio and appreciate all the cooperation that we got. So, you guys collected the samples twice a week, we processed them and tracked what the prevalence was of the virus in the wastewater so we could see if it was increasing, if it was at a high level, if it was worthy of concern and response or not. And then the other idea is that you could do targeted testing to respond to that and figure out really where is the problem. You could test schools, you could test prisons, you could test, you know, whatever, whatever, long-term care facilities, things like that. So, we began that testing, you can't see it very well, but that was a heat map on the right that we could show where in the county. I mean, one nice thing about this, it gives you localized information rather than just county metrics. So, if you're trying to decide, do you need to close things down? Does a school need to go virtual? They can do it with more local information. So, we tested twice a week and then we would report twice a week the next day to each municipality and this is an example of the San Luis results over time and you can see there is sometimes when it did get fairly high, we really had two times that we alerted saying there's really an issue that needs to be dealt with. And, well, let's see, so this is what we do with the quantification. We had either, we're not detecting it, there's no response needed. We detected at a certain level, that's kind of level of concern one, where there needs to be enhanced awareness of being careful about things. And then level of concern two is more where we recommend clinical testing so that people know there's something going on, they should get tested even if they don't feel sick. Up to the level three, which is you really need to consider people staying home. So, we would send these, twice a week, we would send interpretations to the municipality to say, here's what we found, we would send a spreadsheet that showed all the levels and numbers and what the level of concern was so that they could act on that. And then we had the whole steering committee, which is really countywide, all the municipalities, the hospital, the county health department, the schools and once a week, we would let them know kind of all around the county what's going on and then if there was some concern, some level of concern or issue, then we would get them all together and discuss it. And so, we did have, twice, that we had a level of concern one was in a particular area, it was in the foothills and then the next time was really kind of countywide. And what that led to was a news release on all their channels from the county about the fact that the levels were high, people really should get tested, take precautions. One of them, things were fairly high in San Luis also and so, San Luis as a city also put out an announcement to your citizens. So, we had that public announcement, that led both times to an article, front-page article in the Yuma Sun, which got a lot of attention. There's no way really to measure what impact it had, but certainly keeping in mind that we started this testing when the pandemic was kind of starting to wane, this at least made people be a little more careful and realize this thing's not done, I do need to still be careful. And these alerts would tell them what was going on, where, and also what resources there were. So, like where could you get free testing? And then we did targeted testing too and even in San Luis, when it got to a high level, we started testing at the detention center to see if that was part of what was contributing to the problem. So, it's turned out, so that was a six-month pilot project, which is about to, the funding for that is about to end. It's turned out that what's really been unique in Yuma County is the fact that we act on it. We have everybody together so they can act on it. Most places across the country, we did bring in a visiting researcher who works on these things around the country. Most places, it's just another data point that the county health department has and not necessarily acted on. But here, we had this, like Yuma County does, we had a good community group that would act on it. And again, we feel it helped keep awareness up when there was a problem and people need to be more careful, get businesses open. And now that we're coming towards the end of it, we've talked with all the municipalities, all the stakeholders, everybody would like to continue it. So, we're searching for funding to see if we can, we got funding, I should say, that the Board of Supervisors has funded two employees so that we know we can keep the lab open. So, now knowing that, we're going to try to get funding to continue at least once a week surveillance in the municipalities so that it's kind of a watching the back door, if you will. It's, you know, it maybe isn't front and center and everybody's concerned, but this way, as new variants might come in or the vaccines might wane or whatever, we'll be kind of able to watch and see if something's getting bad again. So, the other thing is we've, during this project, we've made some collaborations where we are having some of our samples tested for new variants. So, they're doing genetic sequencing and they can see if there's any new variants that come in. We'll know that and also the visiting researcher that we had has developed a model that not only can we give this level of concern, but we can also give an estimate of how many people are contributing to that sample. So, you might react different if it's five people shedding a lot that's showing a high value versus 150 people or something and so that'll be part of it going forward. So, we're, like I say, we're out there searching for funding. We have some, we believe some good prospects for funding to keep that going. We appreciate that your utilities department has been collecting samples and is willing to continue that. So, fingers crossed, we'll keep it going at no cost to you guys. Worst case, we would say, here's what it costs if you want to continue it.
Paul, I just want to say that when I received a call from you and county supervisor, who was the county supervisor, was it?
Probably Reyes.
Yeah, yeah. And one of the things that.
Oh, no, it was McLeod.
Yeah, it was McLeod.
Russell McLeod was a big.
Russell McLeod was a big pushing for that, yes, exactly, so, yeah. And a year ago, we didn't have this tool. And the thing is, the fact that the University of Arizona was using it to screen and actually test the water in the dormitories and they were, I mean, they were able, they acted on it. And the thing is, and it's something we need because we didn't have a tool. Now, we have at least, the last time it was elevated, we gave notice and people took the proper precautions because it stayed there and then it went good. So, this gave us a couple of weeks in advance that we have high numbers, there are people out there and it gives us an opportunity as a city to inform our citizens of the event, if it's happening, to take precautions. And so, we are limited now in what we can do, the Governor has decided that it's basically on you, on the person. But I think it's a necessary tool and I think the city should continue doing it because as of right now, numbers are looking very good, but I hear some of the hospitals on our counter side is full. And so, they're not far, we're not far apart. And so, we need to be very conscious, we need to be vigilant and please let us know if we can do anything, if we can help you and assist because we definitely need to use this tool for our advantage, especially when it comes to our seniors.
Thank you, I appreciate that and one thing I may ask you if we continue is, I had hoped to get a sample from your sister city across the border and I never quite got there, but we're able to do that if.
I think we can get you some. Okay, we'll get you some.
Great, I think that would be valuable, so. But again, thank you to you and your staff and.
Thank you.
Appreciate the support.
Thank you for your hard work, appreciate it, thank you. We're going to go ahead and go with the consent agenda. All matters are considered routine by City Council, may we enact it in one motion? A discussion desire that I will remove from the consent agenda and we consider separately, Menasoff Work Session held May 19, 2021, regular council meeting held May 26, 2021. Distortances from June 2nd, 2021 to June 14th, 2021, Allowance in motion to approve consent agenda?
Here I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, there's a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's against, motion carries. Item number 6A, discussion prospecting all matters regarding regarding an informational update on the Mesa Street Improvements Project, Danny Torres Economic Development Manager.
Good evening Mayor, members of the council. This presentation, Sonia, would you mind bringing it up? Thank you. This presentation will be done by myself, Uloki Obeda, Public Works Director, and Mary French Jones. Back in May of 2020, we held a public hearing where the city council selected Mesa Street as one of the priority projects to be submitted to the Arizona Department of Housing for Community Development Block Grant. In August, we started the design of the project and that's where we started looking at, you know, what would the project look like? Uloki is going to come in in just a bit to really talk about the details of it, but in a summary, we are calling it Mesa Street Improvements Phasing Project. Phase one includes improvements to the road, sidewalks, curb and gutter, AD ramps, storm drain and retaining wall. For phase two is the tie-ins for C Street and D Street, enroading improvements, curb and gutter, sidewalks, pedestrian, concrete steps with safety rail, which Uloki will talk a little bit about it, and private land acquisition, which I will get into it a little bit more. So, with that, let me have Uloki come in and give you a little bit more detail of, you know, what we have been talking to, some of the residents flyers have been delivered. There was a petition for this specific project and the need for it and so, we thought that it would be a good idea to come in and not only provide an update to council, but for the residents as well. Uloki?
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So, to go over the scope of the project, I think we've discussed this in the past and different options, different alternatives for the one ways and everything else. So, what we have here is sort of what staff thinks it's the best layout and sort of best circulation and that's including input from PD and fire. But really, with the phasing of it, we have the Cesar Chavez and I don't think I have a pointer.
Yeah. So, the area here on the top, the north block of what's shown on the screen, that's really the phase one of the project, which is what's funded by the grant. It includes actually Mesa Street, two-way between E Street and C. And we have a retaining wall facing the hill and that pretty much just allows us to be able to fit the roadways improvements within that room. And then on C and E, we stop, the grant project stops just east of the alley. What is now the alley, which is now the actual road, which is right, it stops right there. You can see that black line there and then. And then along E Street, same thing. So that's the end of phase one. And then for phase two, actually it has the connections between phase one and actual Archibald along E and the same thing along C. And then additional work that's included in phase one, if enough funding is available. If not, it will still be more like phase three, but it's breaking it into two phases. But it will be the work along E, E Street on the north side and as well as along F Street between Mesa Street and Archibald. The, part of the project that we're including in phase two, not in phase one, it's, we're adding some stairs. There's stairway at the end of C Street, allowing pedestrians to be able to come down the hill into, into, pretty much into the San Luis Plaza Drive area. That's something that at least in the public work side, people have been asking for something like that special, especially people that don't drive. And if you look out there right now, there is pedestrian trails that people go up and down that, that hill. But, but again, that's going to be included in phase two, not part of the grant project. I'm not sure if there's any questions from council so far. Okay, so just to reiterate, so on, on Mesa Street between C and, and E, it'll be two-way, two-way traffic. We're going to allow for, there's going to be room for parking on one side for, for pretty much for residential parking, on, on street parking. And then on the, what currently is the alley, it's going to be a one-way northbound with sidewalk on both sides and it's going to allow for parking on one side. And right now we're looking at parking on the east side of the alley. Mainly because the lots to the east, which face Archibald, don't really have much parking room on Archibald because of the three, 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 one-way, three lanes, one-way to the south. And then on these other lots to the west, they will have on-street parking. And that's really it. I mean, there's going to be two-way traffic along, on, on E, same thing on F. And then over here on the, on the, what it's going to be the grant funded project, there's going to be sidewalk on both sides all around that block for, for proper pedestrian access and ADA compliance.
Mr. Veda, the retention wall, where exactly will we be putting the retention?
So actually the retaining, retaining wall has been, was one of the main challenges that we're looking for funding purposes. Originally, we're looking at like 500 foot of retaining wall. And as design progressed, the retaining wall will start on, here at the curve on the south side, turning around C and coming over onto Mesa Street. And they'll end right there. You can see where my, the cursor is. That's really where the retaining wall is approximate location where it's going to stop. There's going to be also a series of, a couple additional retaining walls where the stairs will be over here as well to make, to be able to make the, the grade change coming down the hill. But, but the length and height of those retaining walls were significantly decreased during design. They were, they looked at different alternatives for, for slopes and for grading that I think we almost got it to almost half of the original amount. Yeah, the, I'm going to go ahead and explain a little bit on the drainage. The, the other, the other key point that was really identified as an, as an additional item to include in this project was we included a storm drain line that connects from the Archibald Storm Drain System. It connects over, or, or we were proposing to connect it over to the, to an existing underground canal along San Luis Plaza Drive. That, that, we call it, it's a storm drain, but it was, it's more of a bleed off line. It was identified in that drainage study that, that, that we worked with a consultant to identify. It was one of the options that would help alleviate some of the stormwater discharge that is generated in this area. We, we've sort of been trying to coordinate with the Yuma County Water Users because they, they sort of own the canal, the underground canal. We were, we've been seeking permission to be able to do that. So we recently were informed that, that it is an option. It is something that we can do. So as, as part of this project, we included that discharge pipe that would help reduce the onsite retention required on all these lots. And I know that's something that it was sort of, we were working on parallel to this project. But I know some of the people in this area were interested in what was the, what was going to be the outcome of that, those findings, whether we're going to eventually be able to implement to try and help these lots with onsite retention. So at this time, we can actually say that we, it will help and we will be trying to implement that, that storm drain pipe. And we actually got a response today. So.
Very good.
So it's actually sort of convenient. But that, that's, that's also a very, very important thing and very helpful for this area as well, as well as the downtown. So.
Can you identify the land acquisition in the map that I would like to talk about a day old?
Before the acquisition, we talked about the land. I was going to ask a question regarding the drainage. One of the, okay, one of the owners actually that owns like where it says phase one, that labeling that's in front of the circle K, and I believe he owns those two lots. He had some concerns and I will discuss in talking with him regarding, because I, the key thing was his drainage. That was a drainage requirement that the city requires if you were to build something right now. And I know the, the lot owner was, was big on, on the drainage. He was, because he could put a lot more cars in there if the requirement wasn't there. So by us doing this, we're going to facilitate, we're actually not going to require that drainage, I believe, is it, that drainage requirement?
That is correct. The, the onsite requirement will be reduced significantly, if not entirely, with these improvements.
That was another concern of the owner on the, on that corner lot. And that's why he wasn't sure if he wanted to sign or not, because he wasn't sure about the drainage. He asked about the drainage. And so, and you just answered the question, that's what I needed to ask, I think. Now acquisition?
Do you want to point out just the problem?
Yeah, as part of the, as the design progressed and, and the actual, the actual alignment of the roadways were pretty much finalized. The, this is a, I think like 1965 plat, when this land was sort of split or platted out. The room for handicap ramps and things like that, it's not quite what we have now. So with that, you know, including sidewalk ramps and the intersections, we would need some easements or actually it would be land. We're looking at getting easements to be able to start the, be able to say that we have site control for, for, for the project. But eventually we might be looking into the purchasing. But it would be in this intersection with C and, and the alley on, on both of the east and west properties. And we would be needing a little corner also on the west end of that first lot as well as this other, these other intersections as well. We would need a little bit here. We would need on these two properties, the corners, just to, to be able to fit the sidewalk ramps and the same thing on this corner here. So we're looking at seven, seven corners.
Seven corners?
Yes.
What's the estimated cost for this? I mean, not the land acquisition, but the overall cost of the project, an estimated.
We're, we're going to go into that one in the next one, but you want to talk about that right away on the Mesa Street as well, children, which one it is?
So we're, we're talking to four, five different owners for that acquisition. The bigger acquisition is up on Mesa Street and the other four are the corners of, of those. So I'll talk a little bit about it.
Please.
So then we get to the, the good stuff, right?
Of course.
So the engineer's cost estimate as of now stands at, for phase one is 908,565,000. Phase two is 211,856. For the private land acquisition estimate, we don't know at this point. We're going through an appraisal to try to know exactly what the cost is going to be. I can tell you that for the four property owners for the corner lots, we have spoken to all four. We are requesting an easement. An easement means the authorization for us to come in and, and do improvements, but they would still own the land. We're doing that as a part of the application to get site control so that we don't get disqualified. But what we want to do and what we're recommending to council is that we go back and we purchase them. So that's, that we'll know pretty soon. And we have talked to Finance Director Monica just to get her up to date because that was not allocated in the actual project. We didn't know how much we were going to need. Again, the four corners are very small cost. The, the other, the other longer one on Mesa Street is the, probably one of the, one of the bigger ones. How much are we getting from the Arizona Department of Housing? We're applying for 626,215,000. The city has allocated 486,320,000 from the general fund in the HERF. Obviously, it covers phase one and phase two, but it doesn't cover the land acquisition, which is something that we really need to take that into consideration as we go back and try to do that. Now in terms of timeline, the application is due next week. We expect award sometime in mid-August. We put alternative award because of the site control issue. If CDVG would have any issues with that, we have a backup application, which I don't know if you recall, Mary came back and tried to prioritize some of the projects and we included Rancho Los Otros Phase Two and Phase Three. So Rancho Los Otros Phase Three would be our backup application in case CDVG had any issues with this project. Site control, again, acquire the private land is hopefully in January. We would start construction in March and September. This is a rough estimate. It all depends on the, on the site control. And that could push the timeline a couple of months. But we feel pretty confident that it's going to go in this, this timeline. Now, what were the challenges? Uloki, actually, we thought it was a challenge and it became, you know, we were, we received the good news from the Yuma County Water Users that they were willing to work with us. So in terms of the drainage system, that became a benefit. BLM, we submitted an application to them. I don't know if you guys recall that project where we have all the parking lot where the agriculture workers park. We submitted an application to Bureau Reclamation. And then we submitted another application to BLM where we tried to acquire specific parts of land in the downtown that would be focused in parks, for parks. So those applications have been submitted since last year. And so that would be an issue in just in the process of acquiring the authorization. For a small portion of this project, if they will not give us the authorization, we can just put that small portion of the project for a future development. And that wouldn't cause any issues with the project. Private land acquisition, again, is site control. It's just convincing the owners that this improvements will improve the area. Will their value of their property would be more and obviously it would be a really good project for the downtown. The cost, Uloki talked about it in terms of the design, the improvements and the site control. And one other item that several of the residents brought up is the commercial truck traffic and access obstruction on C Street. If you recall, we have Mesa Street and on the south side, we have factor cells. What the, what the residents are complaining about is that whenever you got traffic going southbound or if you got some deliveries happening, they're parking not only in their ramp, but they're parking in the streets. And they're blocking any resident from having access to their property. So that is an issue that once we construct this, it's an issue now. But once we construct this, they're not going to be able to do that. So that's something that we're going to have to get strong in terms of enforcement to make sure that all these improvements that we're putting in this project, that those, those residents will be able to access their property. So with that, Mary, Uloki and myself are here to address any questions you might have.
I want to say that thank you and it's something that needed to be done. And we discussed this in the past and I actually thank the residents who are here, who actually started the petition. And I really appreciate that. And it's something that the city has been looking, we've been looking at all, all possible options and we're looking, we, we have looked. Mr. Veda has actually personally gone out and looked at the different streets. And Mesa was, was one of them. And thank you for the expedited speed you guys have been doing this project. And that just tells us that the caliber of people we have working and we have you and your staff and grant writers and Mr. Veda and the water associations also. And it's very important. And no, I'm excited. I really am excited. I hope we get awarded. I really do. Anyone else from council?
No, Mayor, I just want to echo what you said and thank all the parties involved in getting this done. Thank you for all your effort.
Just wanted to say thank you for the update, Jenny. That way the community and us as well are informed and we know when this is going to happen.
Thank you, Jenny, and all the parties involved. I have a question. On the, on the road on the far right, close to the post office perimeter. Okay, that's going to be a two-way traffic road? Because right now it's only a one-way, isn't it?
On this one here?
No, no, that one right there.
This one? So it, it will be, it will be a two-way traffic cross-section? I think, I think mainly it's one-way because the post office is sort of one-way. But the roads are being improved to standard, so we're going to be having the full width. So this is sort of a concept that's being proposed. In the event that down the road, we decide to do any landscaping or create some kind of green, open space area here, that could always become parallel parking and we keep it one-way. It's just difficult to do one-way now and then plans change or something, the process. That's going to sort of be like a more complicated project down the road. So right now it's being proposed as a two-way width, but it can be used one-way with parallel parking. So, so it would have room for, for two-way traffic. The, the one thing that I just wanted to mention for everybody, I think, just something from staff side, I think we've been talking about this project probably six years, maybe even seven.
Yeah.
I mean, first it becomes sort of like a concept and it's really like, oh, how would we be able to get funding? So much of the speed or, or all fast we're working on it is just because of the funding opportunities. And we thought, we see the, the opportunity and so we're trying to make it work. But this is one of those projects that's definitely has, has significant challenges. But I think it's, we've been fortunate that we, I think we can make it work.
So for clarification, you, this was brought up six years ago, six, seven years ago, was it?
I would say at least because when, when that, that parcel was developed, like you mentioned, this year, the onsite, people were asking about, you know, what are we doing about drainage? What are, what are we, what are we doing for, to help these small parcels so they can get developed? And that's when, you know, as staff, we started looking at options and Jenny worked on trying to get funding for the study. The study got completed. So yeah, it's, it's been, it's been on the books for years. And honestly, I mean, it's one of those things that we see the opportunity and hopefully we can make it work.
Very good.
Mayor, I want to mention that.
Please.
I remember when I approached you guys two years ago about this because I've been approached by those residents too, you know, and I just want to thank you guys because, I mean, I know that we had this plan in the agenda, you know, we wanted to work on this for so many years back. But I mean, but it was important from the residents also, you know, reminding us that it was a need in that area. I want to thank you, Uloki and Jenny for working on this. And of course, Mary being involved in this, this is very exciting news for all those residents. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. We're going to go ahead and go with item number 6B, Discussion Possessional Matters Regarding An Increase Of Purchase Price Of An Ambulance Above The Price City Council Approved On September 2020. Chief, Ramires?
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This item was, like you said, was brought to you in September of 2020. After the purchase price during the build, we learned some stuff during the COVID phase. We added some, especially a UV light to the ambulance, a permanent UV light, which increased the price by $701. a permanent UV light, which increased the price by seven hundred and one dollars. So right now, the ambulance is on its way here and we're actually formally requesting to rat, the ratification of the purchase order 2021-696 to Republic EBS and the amount increase of seven hundred and one dollars.
Thank you. No, no, that's something that needs to happen and it's something we need. I see the ambulance is constantly moving in and out, in and out. And when you mentioned the number of miles accumulating, I look at him now and I'm like, wow, yeah, that's why. No, no, I have nothing against it. Good job and let's get it done. We need that second, that fourth ambulance here.
Exactly.
Good job. Anyone from council, concerns? No? If not, I would take a motion.
Mayor, I move to ratify to the seven hundred and one dollar increase price to purchase the ambulance as presented.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. I was in favor?
Aye.
I was against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
We're going to go ahead and go with item number six C. Public hearing followed by discussion and possible action on matters regarding Resolution Number 2187, Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Luis Obispo adopting the budget, budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. I will now take a motion to open public hearing.
I'm the mayor.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. I was in favor?
Aye.
I was against? Motion carries. Monica, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. Two weeks ago, we presented to council the tentative budget for approval. Since then, since then, the tentative budget has been published in the local newspaper for inviting the public to comment. After the, after the tentative budget was approved, it was brought to our attention, the need to add a additional position to the budget. It was the court enforcement position. This is to ensure compliance for the public works and business activities in the city. In order to accommodate that request, we removed from the tentative budget that was presented, we removed an assistant position for the public works department and we reallocated some expenses. This change did not increase the budget, nor changed the positions that are considered in the budget. By statute, we cannot increase the budget after it is presented. We only are reallocating resources to make sure that the needs of the city are met. With that said, we are proposing or recommending for approval, a budget for fiscal year 2022. Sonia, do you want to put the spreadsheet so the council can see that?
You mean the attachment rule as I mean?
So we are, so we are recommending for, for the budget for fiscal year 2022, a budget at ninety-four million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars as it was presented in the last session. This includes the amount of transfers out. There's a reason that if you look at the amount of the line one, in the line one, it says eighty-nine million, five hundred, thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven. This is net of transfers. But if you add those, that line with the amount of transfers, you have the amount that it was presented in the tentative budget. And this is what we are submitting for approval. Like I mentioned, aside from the change that I just mentioned, no other change was made. And as I mentioned in the prior session, this is a very, we are very optimistic with next year. We are going to do a lot of projects that has been on the shelf for many years. But next year is giving us the opportunity to address many needs of the community. So we're looking forward to next year. Therefore, I respectfully submit to council for acceptance and adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2022.
Monica, our budget ends when? In a couple of days, right?
Yes.
So the budget starts June 1st?
July 1st.
July 1st, July 1st.
July 1st.
Oh, yes, July 1st. I would like to congratulate staff and you and everyone and all the section heads and department heads. It's been a challenge, especially with all the projects that were not done last year. We had to put them on hold and I think that was a very smart decision by council and by staff to put in on hold those big projects. So next year, we should be seeing a lot more of those projects get done. And that accounts for that transfer. That's very important because we were going to say, wait a minute, you have ninety-four, we are approving ninety-four million, but the expenditure is fifty-four point zero one one. So for clarification, thank you for clarification. And that position, yeah, we need it. So thank you for doing it so short, in short notice and I appreciate your staff doing that. Okay, so I have no other questions and comments. I just want to say thank you, good job. Gracias. Anyone from council?
Just make a comment, Mayor. I just want to thank you, Monica, for the help. I know that year was very hard, but I want to thank you for all you do for, for our city, you and your staff. They are doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Matías?
Just, just for clarification and, you know, reading the newspapers and everything, we're not in a deficit, correct?
Yes, correctly. And that's, you are asking that question and this is scheduled, is placed, explained perfectly. As I mentioned in the prior council meeting when I presented the tentative budget, we are very, we are fiscally responsible and the budget is balanced. In fact, it is required by statute. We cannot adopt a budget that is not balanced. But in order to balance the budget, to say that it is structurally balanced is not just taking the revenues and expenditures. Pretty much you have to have the same and you got to make sure that you match recurring revenues with recurring expenditures. So that's one portion. But the other one is also that we have carrying balances from prior years. So those balances, we want to make sure that we match them with one-time expenditures because those are not going to happen again. So we want, we got to make sure that we do that and that exercise was done. And because of prior years that we have been, especially with COVID, that we did not spend as much, travel was suspended, some projects were delayed. So we were able to accumulate positive carryover that next year, we're going to be able to use it to do more projects. But when you see it, sometimes you, you can see a shortfall, but that necessarily doesn't mean a shortfall. And in this schedule, you can see in the line, third line below in letter E, you can see when it says balanced net position and right there it says twenty-eight million. So that includes like our positive balances. And at the bottom of the line, you can see, you can see resources available. At the end, you can see that we have one forty-two million resources available, which is a positive carryover versus our spending, projected expenditures are eighty-nine million. That does not include the transfers out. It's like it gives us a cushion. But again, not because we see that difference, it's that we have a lot of money because remember that balance includes also fixed assets that are not liquid. So that's part of that.
It's a matter of interpretation, but we're fiscusly responsible.
Exactly.
And we have a balanced budget on time, so.
And by law, and by law, we have to have a budget.
Yes.
Are we in a deficit or not?
No.
No, no, we don't have.
Your short answer was no.
No, we don't, we don't, we don't have a deficit.
Are we going to make a correction on the news or how is that going to happen?
I think that's on the PR side that they'll.
Yeah, it's because it's, 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 like I said, yes, you just match current revenues with current expenditures. We want to have a shortfall, but we have to remember if we have a positive carryover that we can use, definitely like we're not going to be in the red. It's kind, we have money to pay that. Otherwise, we wouldn't like, I wouldn't recommend it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do want to say, Monica, thank you and your staff as well. But another thing, Mayor and council is there's a lot of promising projects, like you stated before. I spoke to Ulochio and I told them, when are these things going to happen? So I kind of asked him for a timeline, but then after speaking to him, I thought it would be a good idea for department heads to come and present to us within the next two work sessions, just a timeline of when their projects are going to get done or an estimated time of when they're going to get done. I know the chief is going to do the fencing and buy police cars and cameras. Ulochio is going to do different street projects and stuff like that. So I, I think that would be a good idea. That way we have a visual as to when these things are going to happen and the community also has an idea of when they're going to happen. I know they're not, it's not a set in stone date, but at least we have a knowledge of when things are going to get done.
I, I agree, we should know, but as you well know, the city is dynamic. Things happen and unfortunately with the pandemic, we're not sure. We can say these, these projects are going to be done in particular time, but if they're not, what happens then? That's the only option. We have a list of them and we should have presentation from, from the different departments. But when you commit to specific dates, it doesn't work that way. It's very difficult to commit. But this is our projected budget and unfortunately with it, let's say for example, the pandemic hits us again. And so all these projects are going to put on hold again. So it's very important, we inform the public, but there's also informant that there's always options, there's always a possibility it might be delayed again. So I do agree, we need to inform our community, but we also need to give our staff ample time to adjust for a situation because I don't want to be stressing you because these are projects that should have been done last year, but because of the pandemic, we're delayed this year. So I'm with you. Let's have the presentations, but let's be very cautious when you say this is going to happen such and such month. So I don't want to put that stress on our staff because it's all about staff. When can we do it? And it also depends now on the situation of the pandemic because let's not forget, it's not over yet. It is not over yet. So hopefully, if we continue testing our waters, gives us a heads up, this will continue. But definitely, but let me, let's be very clear and make sure that our newspapers are aware that we're not in a deficit for clarification and projects are going to be done. And it's very important that the community knows that projects need to be done. Okay, so I agree with you. Let's, let's do that. But caution on, on, on specific dates.
I agree. So it could, doesn't have to be an exact timeline, just when they think it's going to start happening. Like Jenny just said, oh, we're applying July 1st. Then we think in, in January and then possibly completed by September. So I think us and the public are very understanding. But yeah, it would be a good thing. Thank you.
Anyone else in council? Anyone from the public? This is called to the public also in regards to this topic, any topic, any discussion regarding the budget? Questions, concerns from the public? If not, I will now take a motion to close public hearing.
I'll move. Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is against? Motion carries. I will now take a motion.
I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2187.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is against? Motion carries. Sonia?
I don't know.
It's not really.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Monica. Item number six D. Discussion and possible action on matters regarding Order Number 2021-6 in order of the Mayor, City Council, City of San Luis Obispo declaring the employee benefits plan a public record, approving the employee benefits plans for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 for the, for administration by the San Luis Employee Benefits Trust, providing for repeal of conflicting actions of city council, providing for severability and establishing effective date for the plans.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. As mentioned, we're here recommending approval of the employee benefits plan for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022. The final plan went to the San Luis Employees Benefit Trust on March 10th, 2021 and the trustees approved plan changes presented on April 16th, 2021 at the budget retreat. The final budget amount allocated for benefit plans is three million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, seventy-nine dollars and is to take effect July 1st, 2021.
As chairman of the benefits board and that, that one of the entities that oversees our benefits, I can, I can say that their premiums, our, our employees' premiums are not going to go up. We continue offering the, one of the best medical plans for our employees. And thanks to our broker, we wouldn't, even though our number of claims or the amount of claims, they have been higher this part of the year, but we've been managing to able to keep costs down in regards to the employees, to the premiums. Thank you, council, for previous approval and hopefully we can approve this new program in which we make sure that we have enough funding for our employees and our priority is our employees and their families. Our employees is to protect the funds in order to continue to be able to provide the adequate medical coverage for the city San Luis employees. So I thank you and HR, I know you've, you guys have worked very hard and, and kudos to our broker and everyone that's made it possible. And I really appreciate everything guys do. So it's hard. While everyone is increasing their premiums, we continue and we actually offer more benefits. And so it's very important. Thank you. Gracias. Any comments from council?
Mayor, I'd like to add a comment to, first of all, thank HR for everything they do. I think they're very professional and very knowledgeable in their area. So thank you. And also just to mention that I think that we have, if not the best, one of the top best employee benefits packets that we offer to, to our employees because we're, we're very appreciative of all the hard work they do.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? If not, I will now take a motion.
Here, I move to approve Order Number 2021-6.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalba.
Thank you, Rosalba.
We're going to go ahead and, and go with summary of current events. Events by Mayor, city council members and city manager present to ARS 38-431.02. First and foremost, I would like to say the city of San Luis continues their intern program. We've been very fortunate that this year we have nine interns from our neighboring universities, except for University of Arizona for some reason, I don't know why. I had to say it, sorry. But the vast majority are ASU students and they're local from the county, from Somerton. I met someone, I guess, and also from San Luis. And I think these are the programs that needed to happen in the city of San Luis. A lot of the students are going and when they apply for positions, they, the first thing they ask you, what kind of experience do you have? And they always look at the interns or if you were participating. And what a great pleasure that the city is able to provide that experience to those interns who are from San Luis, who are from Somerton, who are from Yuma. And they could put on that resume that they didn't intern in the city. We have interns in administration, we have interns in human resources, we have interns in, let's municipal court, finance. We have interns in public works, planning and zoning. We have interns in human resources, municipal court also. And I believe I also saw, we also have an intern. And is it fire also?
IT, IT as well.
IT also. So I am so proud of the students who, who decided to apply and, and be part and actually gain the experience and see how government works and how different department works. And I sure hope it helps you, it prepares you for a career that you have chosen. And this is a small token of how the city can help our youth who actually are going to the universities and actually thinking of, of coming back. And that's very important. So I'm very proud for, for our interns and proud of our staff and proud of council also for approving the intern program in our last budget. So. in our last budget. So, and it's an in-person, so a lot of, a lot of people are still doing online. We're actually doing it in person. So thank you. And I believe, Matias, Vice Mayor, you had some events?
Got invited by A-DOT yesterday to attend the first live, going back to live training sessions for the, for the cross-border, I always forget the acronym for it, for the training, for the truck drivers. So it was good to see that it was a full room, a lot of new faces, a lot of the older attendees were there supporting the new, the new guys. It started at nine o'clock. I was there around between ten to eleven-thirty, and I believe it went all the way through four-thirty, five o'clock. The other good news was that attending the meeting there, Officer Carvajal, we found the missing garage gate opener, gate opener for the gate that A-DOT facility has to Magrino Park. So now we know how to open it. So now our executive director, Buna, is going to figure out who to hire to, dirt's about two feet, so you can't let it open, but we figured out how to open it now. So it's actually hardwired to their office, so they control it. So it's not a remote, it's an actual button. So that was that, attending and zoning meeting yesterday afternoon for the county, being part of appointed there. And tomorrow, I have port authority meeting in the morning and YMPO meeting in the afternoon. So busy week.
Busy week, busy week.
I'll be there with Matias.
Very good, very good. Also, I want to say also that the work on the port of entry, the money, the money that's needed for the, the supposedly ninety million dollars that were needed, it appears now it's going to be over a hundred million more dollars that we need for port of entry one.
Hundred more or?
No, actually, instead of ninety, it's going to be a hundred million.
A hundred million, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Not a hundred and ninety.
No, 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 that's not, no, not just. It looks good. We, we were getting, we have support from our, from our local and also Arizona congressional delegation. And it appears we also, we'll, we'll see in a couple, like a week or two, that we actually have a lot of support from CBP, a lot of support from GSA, a lot of support from the federal government, from actually from the presidential, from, from the executive branch. There, there seems to be a very good news coming our way in regards to the funding. And so we're hoping, the next couple of weeks, I'll let everyone know regarding the, the proposed budget or proposed funding, the part that's needed for port of entry two. I also like to report that the Mexican, on the Mexican side, they're working vigilantly in trying to work with the Avenida Morelos and, and Archibald Street regarding trying to fix that curve, that problem that's created in the evenings. They're working. Ned Bank still has not answered regarding the funding for the studies, but we should know like within two weeks, the funding. So that's basically delaying. Also, last, actually, last week, I had a, a meeting with the different parties in regards to the situations in our ports and our borders. It appears that Douglas is getting support for the second port of entry. It appears that Nogales, they're making a lot of noise. They were when we were seven years ago in regards to Deconcini, their port that needs in funding. But everything is pointed in the direction of port of entry one, the city of San Luis, Arizona, getting its total funding for that project. So we continue working together as a team, and also we have the support from the county, from, from, from the mayors, from the regional mayors, from Somerton, from Yuma, from Wilton. And we also have the support of our governor. So it's, it's a big push, and we also have the support of the mayor of Nogales and Douglas. And so it, it really counts when all the mayors and everyone is working together and making sure that our ports get funding because we need a better port, we need a better way of controlling traffic. And it is, it is absolutely unnecessary for people to be waiting an hour, two, or three hours to go into Mexico and coming back and having to wait the same amount of time. And while other ports have sixteen, seventeen, twenty-four lanes, we only have seven on a good day, maybe. But the staffing is there. GSA, no. We have cooperation with CBP, and our Mexican counterparts are also doing their part. And hopefully, the restrictions will be lifted soon. But the other thing that's going on, that we're actually facilitating, we're helping the consulate, and I am very appreciative of Amanda Guerre and her group, they're actually started vaccinating with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Actually, people who work in industry, las ma- 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 maquilladoras and different parts, they're actually doing vaccinations in our port of entry two, like they're doing in Tijuana. And I believe in that area, the US has already vaccinated over twenty-seven thousand vaccinations have been given in the, in the region of Tijuana. Right now, I believe there is three thousand five hundred vaccinations of Johnson &amp; Johnson allocated for this movement and this well. Actually, if this goes well, we're going to continue providing vaccinations to our counterparts in Mexico, especially those who work in industry. And the more we get vaccinated, the more immunity we get, the better off everyone is in the region. So this is an example of how it working as a region. Even though we have that little fence that divides us, that's created, that's created a lot of chaos, we're still able to work with our counterparts and provide them with a necessary protection like we do. We are, we're blessed, we're fortunate to have three vaccinations available for us, some people don't. And so by giving them that option, it only, not only helps them, but it also helps us everyone be more healthy. So I'm, I'm really appreciative of, of the actions. I spoke to the consulate in Yuma from Mexico, and he's very appreciative, and they're doing their part. And on behalf of the city, we, we told them we support the program a hundred percent. We will continue providing any, any necessary assistance along with the county in regards to vaccinations. So busy week, next busy, it's going to be really busy for the next couple of weeks. So anyone else?
I'll add, I was able to join the, the thirty-eighth annual Naleo Conference this morning. Pretty interesting. There's a lot of information there as well. I think tomorrow, we're going to have president and vice president both speaking in the conference, and I think it's the first time that's happening, so looking forward to that. I was also reading the, the monthly report from all the department heads and just wanted to say thank you guys for all your hard work. The data is there, everything they're doing on a day-to-day basis. And a shout out to Parks and Recreation and their staff because they, like as soon as we said we're back to being open, they've stepped it up and have a lot of things going on for, for our citizens and our kids and, and our youth. So thank you guys for your hard work.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, if I may add two more comments. I think I met with the mayor of Yuma last week, and I think Jenny confirmed it earlier. Looks like the binational bike ride is going to be back on in October. I mean, I heard from the mayor of Yuma. So everybody start getting ready. Want to get more participation, bring it back up, so hopefully it continues forward. And then it felt good yesterday, I, I sponsored a kickball team and employees were there yesterday playing kickball already last night. Mr. Perez over there, his team did great last night, but it felt good to see everybody back at the park and having fun. I mean, it's way overdue and being out there and getting back into the groove is the first week of it, but it felt good. The kids are happy running around, and so hopefully, it stays this way and everybody stays safe. So thank you to the Parks and Rec for working hard and keeping those lights on late at night, and hopefully, more people start attending the games. I think we're down to, we're up to ten teams for the kickball league already as of today, ten teams. So we usually average twelve, thirteen teams, so that's not bad for.
Very good. That's good. For those council members, I invite you to be part of the mayor's bicycle ride. It's only fourteen miles. And it's, it's good, it's healthy. So all mayors have, all mayors have already accepted the challenge. And, and so we're going to invite council to, to, let's ride our bikes, and this is not a race, even though it may appear to be a race when the mayors are, are a little competitive. But no, it's not a race. It's, it's, it's a wait, it's a wait.
October.
October.
And I don't think it's competitive. I think that's more out of respect that we let the mayors get ahead of us. Cross the finish line first.
Thank you for making feel good. There it is. But I invite everyone, okay? We also have, our PD is involved, CBP is involved, Border Patrol is involved, our paramedics are there, actually. And so everyone's involved in both sides. I mean, we have the, sometimes I believe we have the, the sheriff department is also involved, but the city of Yuma is also involved, but the big group is the city of San Luis. And we provide restrooms and we provide a lot of the amenities and, but it's a great event, and I invite everyone. And it's, 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 it's really good, and we control traffic very good. So we have not had any accidents. We've been very fortunate, but we will continue doing it, and I invite everyone. And thank you. That's, that's all I want to say. Anyone else?
Mayor, yeah, I've been attending a series of community events. As you know, I've been helping, assisting Pastor Castro on his dispensas. You know, very often. And then also, I've been attending Campesinos y Fronteras events. And also, I've been very active on, on the senior center activities.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, council member. If not anymore, I will now go ahead and, let's see here. Call to the public. This is time for the public to comment. Members of the city council may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, therefore present to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero one H. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. Call to the public. I believe we have, how many people signed up?
Two people, Mayor.
Okay.
The first one is Gary Snyder.
Okay, please, Mr. Gary.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. I want to first say congratulations for the Fourth of July. It's great to have it open for the community. It's awesome to have the Fourth of July here. I'm going to have to wait a few minutes or pass because I'm waiting for a legal document to go by, and I haven't received it yet. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I have a next speaker?
Adam Saldana.
Is he here? What was the name again? Repeat the name again.
Adam Saldana.
It appears he left. Okay, I will now attend a motion to executive session.
Mayor, we just received another.
Oh, one more?
Speaker request.
Guillermo Fuentes.
Guillermo?
Guillermo Fuentes. Sixteen thirty North Ninth Avenue. I just wanted to approach you, to congratulate you for the work you are doing for this community. It doesn't matter how hard you guys work, you still will be criticized. But I don't want you to feel bad because there are evil people outside that will come and criticize you. But I just want to say that at least you're paid. And as board members, they don't pay us for that people that doesn't believe that we don't get paid. We don't get paid to receive all the garbage that we receive. But I just want to tell you that don't feel frustrated. People choose you to represent them because they believe in you, and don't you ever forget that. People wanted you to represent them. It doesn't matter what two or three or four toxic people said or talks about you. Just remember that. Don't forget that. If you're there, it's because we chose you to represent us, because we believe in you. So keep working as hard as you can so you don't leave the citizens down. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now attend a motion to executive session.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All is against. Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good night.